Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Wow, and the clock is right on the button. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Talantino?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy? Here.
Okay, motion to excuse Commissioners Collins and Miller, Commissioner Talantino.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioners Miller and Collins.
Second. This move is supported. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to item number C, which is the Notice of Public Comment. Does anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on an agenda item? When we get to that item, we would call on you to be able to give your discussion item at that point. Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item D, Consent Agenda. Item 1, Approval of the City Commission Meeting Minutes of October 15, 2018. Item 2, Acceptance of the Airport Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of September 13. Item 3, Acceptance of the Community Services Board Meeting Minutes of October 23. Item 4, Acceptance of the Historic Structures Management Committee Meeting Minutes of September 26. Item 5, Acceptance of the Local Development Finance Authority Meeting Minutes of April 26. Item 6, Acceptance of the P E H P Public Works Unit Meeting Minutes of October 4. Item 7, Acceptance of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of October 11. Item 8, Acceptance of the Police and Firemen Pension Board Meeting Minutes of September 12 and October 17. Item 9, Reappoint Kristen Collins, Marjorie Hank, Dan Riatore, and Gary Sharp to the Local Development Finance Authority for a term to expire December 31, 2022. Item 10, Approval of the Police-Fire Pension Corrective Action Plan to remedy underfunded status, Form 558, or 5598. Item 11, Award a bid for an ambulance cot for the fire department. Item 12, Authorization of an application to apply for training funds from the Michigan Firefighters Training Council. Item 13, First reading of an ordinance to amend Section 10-1.2004 of the city's zoning ordinance to add review standards for dimensional variances and schedule a second reading for the November 19, 2018 City Commission meeting. Item 14, First reading of an ordinance to amend Sections 10-1.1800, subsection 7 of the city's zoning ordinance to provide for the construction of uncovered decks and porches within the required front yard and schedule a second reading for the November 19, 2018 City Commission meeting. Item 15, Scheduling of a public hearing on a resolution to vacate the full width of the alley within Block 15, replat of Washburn subdivision with retention of utility easements for the November 19, 2018 City Commission meeting. Item 16, Concurrent regarding Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Local Grant Match Contribution by LSSU. Item 17, Approval of a private use agreement for purposes of constructing a private sanitary sewer through Sherman Park. Item 18, Approval of the Memorial Park Bench and Park Picnic Table Donation Policy. Item 19 is from the Ordnance Evaluation Committee, first reading of an ordinance enacting the repeal of various provisions of the Code of Ordinances. Item 20 is from Michigan Liquor Control Commission, transfer of ownership escrowed of 2018 Class C and SDM license for Austin Cigar Lounge LLC located in Sault Ste. Marie. Number 21 is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a Commissioner that would like something further explained on the consent agenda? Commissioner Twardy?
I so moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
This move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E, Special Orders of Business, 1, Appointment of Planning Commission Liaison.
Okay, thank you very much. And at this time, Commissioner Collins had expressed a desire not to serve on that committee any longer. He's been missing meetings, and it's just very difficult for him to make those planning commission meetings, so that he'd like to give that up. And in talking with Commissioners, Commissioner Talantino was willing to serve on that committee. Is there any other Commissioner that would like to at this point? Okay. We need a motion to... Commissioner Twardy?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Talantino to the Planning Commission.
Support.
This move is supported. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say aye. Congratulations, Commissioner Talantino. It's certainly a busy committee, and I think he'd be an excellent member.
Item 2, Under Special Orders of Business, is first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 10-1.03 of the city's zoning ordinance to permit the zoning board of appeals to adjust the boundary of a zoning district where a parcel is split-zoned and schedule a second reading for the November 19, 2018 City Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. City Manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, Community Development Director Freeman will present to the City Commission.
Evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. So this actually began back at the end of January of this year when we concluded the Hiawatha Behavioral Health Rezoning Request down the street. The Commission indicated that they preferred some other way to deal with these split zonings rather than as a rezoning application. So I did some research and found that Traverse City actually empowers their zoning board of appeals to deal with such situations. Went to our zoning board of appeals and discussed it with them, brought them some language for their consideration and approval, moved that on to the Planning Commission for their consideration, and now it's before the City Commission tonight. What you can see in the slide is the section that deals with how the zoning map is handled, and what we'd be doing is adding paragraph 3, which is at the bottom, and underlined. The zoning board of appeals already has the authority to interpret the zoning map where there's questions about where a line actually is. This, of course, predates computer technology, so when you had a relatively small map and thick markers, it wasn't always clear where the lines were and what something was zoned and what something wasn't zoned. So grabbing onto that, this seems like a natural extension to allow them to adjudicate situations where a platted parcel under single ownership actually has two different zoning designations. So if this language is to the Commission's approval, the recommendation would be to move this to a second reading at the November 19 regular City Commission meeting.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Twardy?
I have a question. My husband serves on the ZVA. I'm wondering if I should abstain from conversation or the vote.
Mr. City Attorney?
No, this is a general matter, not a specific matter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Talantino?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached ordinance, the first reading, and schedule a second reading for November 19, 2018 City Commission meeting. Support.
This move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item 3 is public hearing on a resolution to vacate the full width of the east-west alley within Block 2 William Greenow's addition without retention of the utility easements.
These sound like a lot of Kelly presentations. City Manager?
Certainly, Mayor. Again, I invite Mr. Freeman to present.
Thanks again. So Mark Shepherd, who's the applicant in this case, owns Quality Automotive. And for those who don't know, it's generally located on the south side of Portage at Greenow Street. Here's the particular alley in question. Mr. Shepherd's property and business is located right here. So the alley is 20 feet wide and only 193 deep at dead ends into the block. There's... and he's requesting it to be vacated without the retention of utility easements. This one's a little bit more interesting than most because Mr. Shepherd applied for this same request back in 2011. The Planning Commission recommended denial on a four-to-three vote based upon objection from residential owners to the south. At the time, they expressed concerns regarding the expansion of business, which we know car repair is not necessarily friendly with residential, as well as the planned removal of some of the vegetation behind the building which yielded view of that property from the residences behind. The City Commission followed suit at their July 5, 2011, meeting, denying the request on a four-to-three vote. Just of note, Mr. Shepherd actually gains nothing with the vacation. This property is Zone B3, and there's a 10-foot required setback in that zoning district. However, where there's an alley, you can actually go from the center line as your point of setback measurement. So since this alley's 20 feet, alley there or alley not there, the setback line actually lands in the exact same place. So there's no buildable area that's gained with this vacation. And speaking of his intent is to simply fence off the area because there's been some ongoing dumping issues that he's observed back there. It's quite overgrown as well. So by and large, the surface of the alley is just grass. It's unimproved. No properties depend on it solely for access. Everybody else has access from either Portage, Greenow, or Maple Street, which is on the south side of the block. There are six adjacent owners, and the properties on the north side of the alley are zone commercial and residential on the south side of the alley. Here you can see kind of a layout of the ownership. Mr. Shepherd's property is here. The property in yellow is owned by the Sioux Tribe. The property in green is a pair of duplexes that are operated by the Housing Commission, and the city holds all the Housing Commission properties under its name. And then the three single-family houses here on Maple Street. Now, of note, I did speak to Ms. Randy Newcomb, who owns the property immediately to the west of the Housing Commission duplexes, and she actually has a garage in the back of her property, which I didn't know was there because it was buried under trees in the aerial and apparently is rather hard to see. So she contacted me and let me know that, hey, I kind of go back and forth in the alley. I have my kayak trailer, and I store some things in the garage. It's intermittent use, but she uses it nonetheless. I let her know that since the alley was never improved for traffic, it's... can't be driving back there necessarily, but I'll see what I can do to see about continuing your ability to go back and forth. She'd indicated that her and her husband have plans eventually to construct a larger garage back there. And I thought, well, I'll mention it to the City Manager. I had a discussion with Mr. Turner, and generally, he seemed amenable to the idea. So that's why I'm bringing it forward to the Planning Commission, or, excuse me, to the City Commission tonight. I had a discussion with the Planning Commission, and I felt very strongly that something should be done to allow the Newcombs to continue to access that back part of the property. So something could look like this. This yellow line represents where the new property line would be if the alley were vacated. This land would go to the Newcombs, and the city would pick up this 10 feet here, and we could possibly have a cross-access agreement to allow them to traverse to and from across that property to access theirs. Certainly, all the parameters and whatnot would have to be worked out with administration to see how we would want to do that, but the Planning Commission generally expressed the support for doing something to allow that to continue. As far as public comment is concerned, there were four homeowners who called in relating to the request, three of whom expressed objection citing concerns about the expansion issues that we talked about already that aren't really a concern. Additionally, they expressed the concern that the applicant would install the driveway within the vacated alley. However, because that gets divided up between the adjoining owners, Mr. Shepherd would only get 12% of that land area by square footage. Full 88% of the square footage would go to somebody other than Mr. Shepherd, so there's no concerns there. Additionally, there were no objections expressed by any of the utilities. Representative of the Sioux Tribe was at the Planning Commission meeting, and he expressed no objection from their standpoint to the request. So the Planning Commission recommended unanimously to the City Commission that the full width of the alley be vacated without the retention of utility easements, subject to arrangements being made for access to the rear of the Newcomb property. So the decision for the City Commission tonight would be to hold a public hearing, receive any public comment, provide any feedback to staff on how they would like to see access to the Newcombs property continued forward, if that's the desire of the Commission, and then take action on the item. Mr. Shepherd is here. If there's any questions to him.
Any questions of Kelly? City Manager, anything further?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just contribute to Kelly's great presentation that it meets all of the technical concerns that administration would have with this type of action, and it would be a resourceful resolution to facilitate a cross-access over the city-owned properties Mr. Freeman described. In regards to the actual motion, a public hearing would be required prior to action being taken on this item by the City Commission, after which I would recommend a motion to approve the vacation as played forth in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll hold a public hearing for the resolution to vacate the full width of the east-west alley within Block 2 William Greenow's addition without the retention of utility easements. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment at this time? Hearing done, we'll go to the... we'll close the public hearing. City Commission. Commissioner Baker?
Motion to approve the vacation of the full width of the east and west alley within Block 2 William Greenow's addition without the retention of utility easements. Additionally, authorize the Mayor and City Manager to sign documents necessary to create an access easement to benefit the owners of 961 Maple Street to cross the southerly 10 feet of the vacated alley to be owned by the city, thereby providing them access to Greenow Street.
Support. This move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item 4, Under Special Orders of Business, is public hearing on a resolution to vacate the full width of West 7th Avenue between Blocks 3 and 6, Foss and Hyde's 2nd addition, and between Blocks 2 and 7, Foss and Hyde's 2nd addition without retention of utility easements, and the vacation of the full width of West 13th Street between West 6th Avenue and West 8th Avenue within Foss and Hyde's 2nd addition with retention of utility easements.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mr. Freeman.
All right. This one is a city-initiated request. This is actually a pair of streets just at the bottom of Foss Hill, kind of between Foss Hill and the East Hurday Industrial Park. You can see the streets in question on the area there. So the Engineering Department has requested the vacation of those two right aways. It'd be West 13th Street between... or West 6th Ave. and West 8th Ave. There's storm sewer and electric present, so there'd need to be a utility easement retained to continue access to maintain those, as well as the West 7th Avenue between Foss Street and Hyde Street. You can see the area with easements in yellow and the area without easements in blue. So all the properties within the area to be vacated have some other access to a right away, so nobody's losing anything or getting landlocked. And additionally, just as a point of interest, there are some very steep slopes in the southwest quadrant, so that land will probably never be developed consistent with how the street layout was put in place, anyway. Here's a topographic map. Each one of these orange contours is 2 feet. Each one of the black ones is 10. So you can see that between the top of Foss Hill and the bottom of Foss, so there's about a 50-foot height differential. And that's only over about a 250-foot span across the ground, so the slopes are extremely steep, making it highly unlikely that anything of any substance is going to happen back here that hasn't happened already. There's been no objections from utilities, and the homeowners who have contacted me expressed no objection to the request. Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the full width of 13th between 6th and 8th be vacated with the retention of utility easements, as well as the two sections of West 7th Avenue between Block 3 and 6 and Block 2 and 7, Foss and Hyde's be vacated without the retention of utility easements. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. City Manager? Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as with the last action, this would require a public hearing prior to action being taken by the City Commission, and after which time, I would recommend a motion to approve the resolution to vacate as presented.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we will hold a public hearing to vacate as presented by Kelly Freeman and City Manager Oliver Turner. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment at this time on the vacation? Okay, hearing done, we'll go to the City Commission. Commissioner Gary?
I move to approve the included resolution to vacate the full width of the West 7th Avenue between Blocks 3 and 6, Foss and Hyde's 2nd addition, and between Blocks 2 and 7, Foss and Hyde's 2nd addition without the retention of utility easements, and the vacation of the full width of West 13th Street between West 6th Avenue and West 8th Avenue within Foss and Hyde's 2nd addition with the retention of utility easements.
Support.
This move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item 5, Under Special Orders of Business, is a public hearing for single-lot special assessment roles, SL-2N-18 and SL-2W-18, and there was an updated list distributed to the Commission prior to tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, twice annually, in time for the summer and winter tax bills sent July 1 and December 1, city administration develops a list of unpaid bills for services provided to specific properties for consideration as a single-lot special assessment. This includes bills generated by code enforcement, as well as any outstanding water bills for which water has been terminated for at least six months, included in front of the City Commission as a list for these single-lot property assessment proposals. This list is updated just prior to entering and presenting to the City Commission and is updated for the review by the Commission. If approved, these charges would be placed on the December tax bills. Pursuant to Chapter 21, Article 5 of the city's Code of Ordinances, property owners will be given not less than 30 days' notice of the amount owed and the property affected. For code enforcement billings, property owners have been sent monthly statements during this time. For sewer and water accounts, there is no service at these properties, and repeated efforts at collection have been made. All property owners of record were sent a notice of this action on September 25 for water and sewer, and September 28 for code enforcement. Additionally, notice was placed in the newspaper, providing access to the proposed single-lot special assessments, and the public hearing has been scheduled for this meeting. Public hearing would be required prior to the City Commission taking action on the subject matter, after which time, I would recommend the City Commission confirm single-lot special assessment role, SL-2N-18, as well as SL-2W-18. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll hold a public hearing on the single-lot special assessment role. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? If you would, please come to the microphone and identify yourselves for the record. We'd appreciate it.
Jim Benoit? Jonathan Benoit. We're just going before you with regards to fees that have been assessed or trying to be put on our property taxes. Again, I know we've brought this to the Commission before. These are for... someone might have a vehicle in their yard, doesn't have a plate on it, or maybe they're just switching plates from one vehicle to another. The city notices it, and they'll send... they won't contact the owners of the automobiles. They'll just send us a letter stating that we're being fined $100, and we have five to 15 days to remove it, and if we don't, then we're going to face fines, fees, and possible prosecution. So right now, we have two, three, four, five different fees that they're trying to levy against our property taxes for other people's... well, four of them for other people's possessions that we couldn't take. The ordinance states that we have to remove it or face fines, fees, and prosecution, but the law says we can't touch it. We have to go through a formal eviction procedure, which is quite a lengthy procedure. And so in the ordinance... I'm sorry. In the Handbook for Municipal Officials, in Section 2, Chapter 77, it states that the provisions of an ordinance must be consistent with state law. The ordinance may not conflict with or be preempted by a state law. The same holds true for federal law. Direct conflict exists if an ordinance permits what a state statute prohibits or prohibits what a state statute permits. And so because the state law says we cannot legally go touch their property, then the ordinance has to be held invalid according to that handbook regulation. One of the fees that they're trying to charge us is for a property that we don't even own. I don't even know who owns the address, and they're trying to charge us $300 for something that we don't even have ownership interest in. It's for a title search, and according to the address, we don't own that property. So I'm just asking that those not be allowed to be put on our tax rolls, on our taxes, because they're not our offenses.
Yeah, because if I go and take these people's car, they're going to pick up that phone, dial 911, and I'm going to be arrested for grand theft auto, and I've got five days, according to these statutes, to take these automobiles or anything else. I can't touch anything. If they've got a box that looks like garbage or a bag that looks like garbage, I can't take it without going through proper eviction procedures. I mean, they could say, oh, I had my grandmother's jewels in there, and they were worth $100,000, and they could sue me and win because I have no right to touch what I construed as a bag of garbage. And so I can't follow this ordinance without being arrested and breaking state or federal law, and the law itself says you can't pass an ordinance that would cause me to do this. Now, how can you add these on my taxes? And if you're going to fine me, I mean, my constitutional rights say I have a right to be heard in court in front of a judge and a jury. If I'm going to be fined, my Seventh Amendment rights tell me if I'm going to be fined anything in excess of $20, fined or levying a fee, then I have the right to a trial by jury. And if you're going to try to levy these fees and fines on me, I'm going to want my day in court, and I'm going to want to have a jury hear this, because if, for whatever reason, you guys aren't understanding this here tonight and try to levy these fines on me, that this is going to go much, much further, and much further than anybody anticipates, because this is... but this is why the City Commission is here. In the event that people working for the city break the laws of the land, you're here to hold them responsible and say, you can't do that. And I don't know who's telling you you can, or what they're using for an excuse, but that can't be done, so...
Are you done?
I'm ready.
Are you finished now?
Yeah, I think that's about it for right now.
Thank you. That's... thank you. City Manager? Anyone... well, just to go to City Manager, let's go to anyone else that would like to speak on that subject? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a topic with... on which I've had extensive discussions with the City Attorney. If it pleases the Commission, the City Attorney could address the concerns regarding the lawfulness of these types of assessments.
Sure. City Attorney?
Thank you. Mr. Benoit's correct. Being a landlord's extremely difficult. The landlord-tenant laws, at least in my opinion, protect the tenants more than they protect the landlords, and they put substantial obstacles in front of the landlords as it relates... relates to the premises. But the landlords have entered into a contract with the tenant, either through a written or verbal lease, to transfer possession of the property to the tenant. There is no exception in the City Charter for that situation. The assessments and charges that you assess as special assessments are legally in rem, not in personum actions, meaning they're against the real estate, and there's no exception for landlords who have given up possession of their property to a tenant temporarily. So it's an in-rem proceeding against the property, and the Charter and ordinances in support of the Charter specifically state you are to put it on the taxes if you, if you concur in the charge. So your action tonight is to concur in the charges and move them onto the tax roll.
Questions of the City Attorney? Commissioner Baker?
Well, can we look at possibly changing the Charter to possibly help protect?
Well, it's actually easier than that. Changing a charter takes a vote of the people. The City Commission has no authority over the Charter, just like the President has no authority over the Constitution. So the, you can determine just not to charge these fees to this property.
And then also, with the Charter as it is, could we find the people that are renting there, or no?
Well, under, under the ordinances, you, you could attempt to collect 50 bucks, 30 bucks, 100 bucks, or whatever, you know, from the owner of a car, or the person responsible for a junk car, or the person responsible for junk and rubbish accumulation, but the City doesn't do actions like that. And they would not, they would create just a huge accounts receivable, because you'd never collect 30 bucks from somebody that moved out of town, or 100 bucks from someone that moved out of town, or money from someone who doesn't have a steady job.
Could you put something in place, so say if it was like a vehicle, to where the enforcement officer would call, like Merle's Garage, and have him just come tow the car, and then it's up to the owner to take care of it?
Well, that, that is how it's, how it's done, only a little different. It goes through the Police Department?
Okay.
And becomes a police law enforcement action, and the, the police see to it that the property's, the car's removed and towed, and provide certain notices to registered owners and title owners, and then if they want the car, they can go pick it up at the yard and pay the yard's charges. All of that is to make it hard to steal cars, because you have to have a way to transfer the title legally, and the only way to transfer the title legally is to run it through the Police Department. So inspection can't just call Merle's and say, come get this car. It has to go through the Police Department, so that the car can stand for the towing bill and the storage bill. Otherwise, the City would be paying for the towing bill and the storage bill, and you'd have a big line item in your budget for, for towing and storing cars. You can decide not to assess these charges to real estate because it's been leased, but you'll never collect that money from a tenant.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gary?
Question for the City Attorney. So if we follow our Charter and we assess these fees to the real estate, do they have legal recourse against the tenants?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Landlord is entitled to damages their tenants caused them.
Thank you.
And that would be part of an eviction proceeding that would be brought by the landlord.
Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. Question for the City Attorney. So then, moving forward, what any landlord could do, then, is to call the Police Department, have junk vehicles towed, and then they're placed into the Police Department's possession for the land, for the property owner to come and find, in order to protect the integrity of the property? Is that what you're saying?
Kind of, but let's say that the car belongs to the tenant. Under the landlord-tenant laws, landlord's not allowed to disrupt the tenant's property without going through the landlord-tenant court. So the landlord would not be able to go to the Police Department for relief. The landlord would have to go to the landlord-tenant court for relief. And, and as Mr. Benoit indicated, and Mrs. Benoit indicated, those are time-consuming procedures, usually take a month or more, but you do end up with a money judgment against the tenant. But landlords have the same problems with their, with their money judgment against the tenants that anyone would have with a money judgment against their tenant. They're rarely collectible.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just, I guess I had a question that I can ask the City Attorney or City Manager. It's my understanding, at least, and from the discussion earlier with the Benoit's, that they have land, they have land contracts with many of their tenants, but they're not recorded. Many of those land contracts aren't recorded, as I understand it. So that, if they were recorded, would they have a, if they were recorded, would they have a different legal standing, then?
No, it would be the same if, if they had transferred possession to a land contract purchaser. The landlord-tenant law is the way you recover that land if that land contract purchaser doesn't make payments. And the land contract holder can create liens on the premises, but as you know, tax liens are paramount, just like they're paramount to the land contract seller's interest, just like they're paramount to the bank's interest with a mortgage.
Okay. Any other questions? We need a motion?
Or is, was he correct in saying that the address is not his?
I don't have any information on that.
We have to take that?
We would, we would confirm the special lot, special lot rule at this point.
Mr. Brown has had his hand up. He might know something about that.
Who?
Robert Brown. Had his hand up.
Mr. Brown?
He may know something about the address issue.
Okay. The address issue? City Man, City Manager?
As Mr. Brown approaches, please come forward. We just note that up until this time, I'm unaware of which address is being referred to in this instance.
804 West 26th for the title search.
Correct. Oh, for the title search. Yes, that is an address with which City Administration has been very familiar.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes, to clarify it a bit, the earlier printout of the special, special assessment, the tax ID parcel number was correct. That's what we base it on. The written address of 805 West 26th was incorrect.
Incorrect.
It should have been 804 West 26th. That was for a title search of the property with the broken sewer, that you are all familiar with.
Oh. Okay, the broken sewer?
The sewer issue.
Okay.
So before court action, we ordered a title search.
Okay.
Per protocol.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to confirm the single lot special assessment role SL-2N-18 and SL-2W-18. Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Vospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item F, Communications, 1 from Commissioner Baker, discussion on current goal-setting session.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks. I just wanted to give a little brief discussion and see where the rest of the Commission's at on our goal-setting session from last year, and if there's anything we can do differently, maybe take, allocate a little bit more time to it, or have Administration maybe look into other sister cities and what they do for their goal settings, whatnot. I feel like it just went pretty quick. There wasn't a lot of time. I mean, we spent a lot of time, but at the same time, it was very short discussion on everybody's goals.
Your, Commission? Thoughts on the goal-setting? I know, City Manager, it's been in place for, I don't know, 10, 12 years, I'm guessing? Maybe a little longer than that? So an update of the, of the present, maybe our peer communities, would have, maybe just to review what they might do? Is that something that, because it's worthwhile and that we could use? You've been here four years now, and have been through three of them, right? Or four?
Four.
Four? Okay. And, yeah, it gets to the point where we start putting dots on priority-type things. It could be because it didn't happen before this year, but normally, there wasn't a lot of discussion, because people, Commissioners normally pretty much had an idea of where they were, were going, type of thing, on what, with the new Commission, it might have been a little more discussion in trying to convince people about particular items, but that, that seems to work, and I know it's got to be, the goal part of it is important process, because it's got to be something that is attainable, and it doesn't bog down the Administration with too many goals. So we have some that continue on and spend a lot of time throughout the year trying to, trying to accomplish those goals, so it may be worth some discussion as far as updating it over these, you know, going forward, if Commissioners would like. Commissioner Twardy?
I feel like we did, we did add another section to the goal-setting this year where we invited in all of the department heads, where they were able to explain to the whole Commission what it is that they do, what their needs are, and what their potential capital improvements are. As far as, like, structurally, like, looking at, like, how we vote with the dots, I think that the City Manager's already kind of been looking at different alternatives to that specific process, or at least, we've discussed it a couple of times, so I know that that's in your mind. As far as, like, taking, like, you know, days for goal-setting and budget, that's not, it just puts too many tasks, too many goals onto Administration, which bogs them down. But, and also, I mean, you know, we're, we're part-time Commissioners, we're not full-time Commissioners, and taking, like, a lot of time and days, it's difficult to do with our, our jobs and our lives. So, I mean, but I'm, I'm more than willing for you to take a look at other peer communities and look at the actual voting process, but as far as, like, lengthening it out and taking, you know, extended time.
I agree. I think we spent a lot of time in discussion?
Yeah.
Before and during, and I think the Administration spent an awful lot of time on the process of, of getting the information to the Commission and that situation. So how we arrive at the final thing is certainly something that we can, can talk about, but I think the amount of information we gather as, Administration gathers for the Commission has been very good over the last lot of years. Mr. Gary?
I agree, and I think the process is, has been good, and it's been tailored a little bit. Are you talking about just having, you know, five-minute presentation periods that we, each person has, or trying to, can I ask the Commissioner a question?
Sure. I, I guess where I'm looking at is more of like a brainstorming session, to where there's discussion of back and forth ideas, you know, if I have a goal that might not be perfect, but if we discuss it for a little bit and have some back and forth, then maybe we can come together with a really good goal. You know what I mean? I don't, I, I felt like last year, there wasn't a lot of, there was the pitch, you know, everybody had their pitch, but there wasn't a lot of talk regarding the pitch on some of the things. And then I also feel like, should there be any kind of public, kind of, should we have any public input, input on our goals, and where the public kind of wants to gauge, like, maybe a survey of some sort that we could put out? I, I, this, again, I'm just brainstorming to try to get...
That occurs in our, in our, already occurs in our six-year plan. I think that that, and the, there's some other, a couple of things that go out there. I think with, because they, the Administration does the day-to-day type stuff, we look at the bigger picture for the policy, and then directing them going forward into the future. So I think, you know, with the 8th Avenue Field and Malcolm Park and that, those are larger items that are well on their way, I think, moving forward. But I, you know, I, I think the Administration's spent an awful lot of time, and the department heads doing what they do, and I'm sure you have input from a variety of sources, so I think that process is good. I think, and, and the days, day long that we, that's just one day, but that doesn't mean that we haven't talked about it and had information coming to us, that kind of thing. The give and take is going to occur during that process, and I, I'm happy with the process at this point. And I think when you look at what we've been able to do as a city with limited tax dollars over the years, where we're reducing the amount that we're getting budgeted, Administration's done an extraordinary job of being able to keep us in the black, the City in the black, and also been able to accomplish some things. Now, there's no question that we, we are doing some other things, and certainly, the citizens have stepped up in, through these crowdfunding activities. We've all been part of that, and we've exceeded each goal or each amount that we've wanted to raise, and we certainly, as a Commission, certainly thank those, those folks that have, you know, dug in their pockets and, and provided that, that income or that, that source of revenue, so. But, yeah, I, I think it's not a big deal. It shouldn't be. We should be able to update that without a whole lot of effort, I would think, and see what other communities are doing. Mr. Baker?
As far as the survey that you mentioned, the six-year, when, how long ago was that done?
Do it every year for the last...
You do it every year?
We update it every year.
The survey?
Through the capital improvement.
Three years ago.
City Manager? You answer, please.
To that point, there is a public input component of the six-year capital improvement plan development. It doesn't, it doesn't entail broadly distributed survey, but it is through public input sessions and presentation at the Planning Commission.
Okay. I guess my, my thing is with the locks, hopefully, moving in, in the next few years, goals change, you know, things change so quickly, and maybe the, the community has a little different perspective now, you know, market rate, housing, and all those different things coming into play.
Let's hope.
So, just discussion on, you know, trying to change it up a little bit and see what other communities are doing and kind of go from there.
Commissioner Talentino?
In a, in a way, I kind of agree with Commissioner Baker. Last year, as a new Commissioner, you know, we were elected in November, and all of a sudden, you're thrown in in this December.
No question.
So it is a little overwhelming. I think procedurally, there's one or two things I would possibly like to see changed. When we go up to do our stickers, as an example, and I believe we talked about this last year, we need to go up one at a time, you know? I mean, it's just those little tweaking things, and I think we don't need to have a whole meeting regarding that, but it's those little things, I think, that we can refine a little bit and really improve the process.
That's not a bad idea, because there's a lot of politicking going on, trying to get someone to change their, where it might go, but... Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, yeah, manipulation of the dots, but, yeah, one more thing. Don't forget, Commissioner Baker, that we do go through our current goals every single year, and we update them as we see fit. But I agree, I mean, if, if there's conversation, or you want to bring something up, and you'd like to have a little bit of a brainstorming session on an idea, I mean, there's no reason that we can't have those.
In the process, in the process?
Right.
Of doing it.
Yeah, since we don't, I want to meet.
Right. It's always in a public meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any, at this point, we'll, we'll see what might be available out there at our peer communities, and see if it's something that we would want to incorporate with some discussion from the Commission at the time, that, or a recommendation, it's up to you.
Certainly, we can move forward with that research, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Baker?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item 2 under Communications is from Glenda King, Policy and Procedure Relating to Enforcement of Property Maintenance Code.
If you'd identify yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Glenda King. Since May of this year, landlords have been speaking to the City Commission about their concerns regarding enforcement of the rental registration, self-certification checklist, and related fees. We have been asking for a meeting to discuss the matter with you. While we wait, and with good intentions... While we wait, and with good intentions, I'd like to make the following six suggestions to encourage your interest in protecting the city housing stock. Number one, at a previous, previous city commission meeting, I understood you to say, correct me if I'm wrong, that before you hold a meeting with landlords, you're going to do another citizen's survey in the near future, and then meet with the landlords sometime in February of 2019? Okay. If this is the case, the problem I see with your plan is the fact that the city's 2019 rental registration renewal is rapidly approaching, and all registered landlords will again be required to sign that self-certification form by the end of February, or face fees, et cetera, et cetera. If you plan to push this meeting with landlords back closer to the end of the 2019 renewal cycle, I suggest fairness. I ask that the commission take action to hold enforcement of the self-certification form and related fees in abeyance for the 2019 renewal year. I believe you can continue enforcement matters during the year with the Sault Ste. Marie property maintenance code and all the city ordinances, and get the same results, except there would be no collection of checklist fees. Number two, I would like you to look at the state's website, go to www.michigan.gov/documents. You'll find the state of Michigan's landlord and tenants' rights document. It is an excellent source of information and a useful tool for both landlords and tenants. If used in the initial step of a housing complaint, it could be a better path to resolution for all parties involved. Number three, basement apartments. This was mentioned in a meeting discussions. You're concerned about the tenant's safety and well-being, me too. Why do you need rental inspections before you do something to address this problem? I suggest you start right now. Start immediate blitz now. Use the city's website to educate people. Create newsletters for your registered landlords, landlords. You have our addresses on the registry. Use local radio stations, newspapers, and other social media to educate landlords and tenants. Hold seminars and meetings with all interested parties. Communicate with us, you could save lives. Number four, obtain access to the city's BSNA software system to review the public records of the city assessor's office, and possibly ordinance enforcement records. There's a lot of information, including photos. Educate yourselves on the condition of the city neighborhoods and the housing stock. Number five, take a day and drive through your city neighborhoods, and please, make sure you drive through all the alleys. You could make it a city commission event, or you could make it a family event. You could, or please check ownership to determine if the property is a rental or an owner occupied. And always remember that both fall under the same codes. Take time, city neighborhoods are depending on you. Number six, I know that many property owners in the city believe that if you make improvements to your homes, their taxes will increase. Tax law is not easy to understand. I suggest that the city inform your city property owners on the basics of Proposal A, and then, and let them know their taxable value is capped until transfer, unless adding square footage. Educate people about the repair and maintenance form available in the city assessor's office. Property owners need to know that they can invest and maintain their homes, and their taxes won't increase. Things like new siding, windows, and roofs, to name a few, all fall under the guidelines of repair and maintenance. Communicate and educate, promote protecting the city's housing stock. Those are my comments, and I hope you consider those suggestions while we're waiting.
Just a question, do you have copies for the city manager that we could have?
I can give you this one, and you could make copies if you'd like.
Or just, we only, you only need one?
You just need one.
Say manager.
I'll give you this one. There you go. Thank you. And then I had a second issue. I FOIA'd the 124 rental inspections since 2012, and I received notice that I owe $880.09 for 31 hours of labor at $28.39. So, I checked into the FOIA law a little bit, and says you're to charge the wage of the lowest paid employee capable of the work. I found the attorney general opinion from June of, June 7th of 2001, under Section 4, Paragraph 3 of the FOIA, "A public body may not charge a fee for the cost of its search, examination, review, and deletion and separation of exempt, from non-exempt information unless failure to charge a fee would result in unreasonably high cost to the body." The phrase "unreasonably high cost" as used in Section 4, Paragraph 3 of FOIA prohibits a public body from charging a fee for the cost of search, examination, review, blah, blah, blah. This opinion is being disregarded here. The city of Sault Ste. Marie will not have "unreasonably high cost" as defined by the attorney general when he spoke to the spirit and the intent of the law. So, I ask for the city commission to work with the citizens and not against them. Don't ignore the power you have to shape the atmosphere in your community. Exercise the authority clearly given to you in policy, and use it to help, not hinder, the taxpaying citizens that elected you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Okay.
Item three under communications is from Stephanie Sabatine, discussion on rental registration program.
Okay, thank you. You'd identify yourself for the record, we'd appreciate it, too.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Sabatine. I want to talk about rental registration. We, I have the original newspaper right here, from the 2012, it's December, it's Tuesday, December 4th, 2012, but I think it was, it had to have been the day before that. It reports here that a number of us came and talked, and I, as I recall, there was just one single meeting for this. We didn't have any workshops or any brainstorming sessions. I really think it would behoove you guys to, you know, talk to us, we're the experts in this, there's many of us that have done this for several years, we know what we're doing, we're not out to just be greedy and take advantage of people, and it just almost seems like that, you're guilty until proven innocent. There were a number of comments in here that I want to point out. We told you guys this was going to happen, what's happening today, we said it was going to happen six years ago. Commissioner Gary, you're quoted in here saying, "It wouldn't change the risk for landlord, and fees would only be assessed in the event of a violation." We have fees galore, this, from what I can tell, and just from talking to people in the public, since I've been coming to these commission meetings, I've been approached by a lot of people, I get approached in Walmart, I get approached everywhere I go, and there's a lot that people have to say. I think they're afraid to come here, I think they're afraid of the same repercussions that's happened to me, and I don't blame them, I would be, too. It seems to me that this program is a mess. We have people who register every year, dump money into their properties, do the responsible thing, and they still get fined, like myself. I got nearly $1,000 in fines, and that's the cap that you can get in fines, so I got $950 in fines that I really don't deserve. I've come here, I've showed you guys proof of things that refute these fines, and nothing's being done. It's just unconstitutional, it's not right, it's morally wrong, it's ethically wrong, and most people do know that. You've got people who are supposed to register their rentals, and nobody knows the difference, whether these people are registering or not. You've got people who are required to register their rentals, and they're registering them even though they're not renting their house. If you own a second home in Sault Ste. Marie, you are required to register it, and I just think that's wrong. I attended the economic lunch where Senator Jason Allen spoke, and he spoke to, you know, the lock job coming here. He stated pretty clear that we need market rate housing, we don't have market rate housing here, we don't have enough of it. And I just, I'm just standing here scratching my head going, why are we people who are investing being picked on? And it's not just landlords, I've had several business people approach me and tell me their stories, thousands of dollars in engineered fees, or engineered drawings, thousands of dollars in fees for engineered drawings that they really don't need. You know, there's people that have been run out, they've told me, we've been run out of town. We were going to go inside the city limits, and we decided not to. If you look on the other side of Three Mile, it's booming on the other side of Three Mile South Side, I don't think that's by coincidence. We were promised no fees, today, the city has generated more than $70,000 in fees and fines off of the backs of hard-working people like myself. I don't think that's very good public policy. I just, I really think that you guys need to have just more than one meeting with us. We have a lot to say, we have a lot to offer, we're the experts at this, and, you know, I just really think that you need to have more meetings as opposed to just the one in February. I don't think that's going to do it, unless you already have an agenda in mind that we don't know about. Any questions?
None.
None? All right.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Okay, so, this has been going on for a while, and we have been hearing about this meeting, is there a meeting scheduled?
City manager.
Thanks, Commissioner. Right now, we are looking at the February timeframe. The first part of the process is to develop the questions for the survey, which would be distributed across the community. The community improvement committee's meeting tomorrow to review the survey questions, and they'll be submitted to the city commission for authorization to release. Once that information, once information is received from the survey, from the input from the community, our plan is to analyze the responses received, take a look at the data, and at that time, it would help inform further conversation about this topic, not only through the meeting that has been discussed in February, tentatively set for February, but also through perhaps smaller focus group conversations as well.
So, the survey is going to be distributed to the entire general public, or just to landlords?
Correct, Commissioner, it would be the entire general public.
Okay.
Including landlords.
Including landlords, correct.
So, can we meet, because I think February, that's a long time to wait, and again, market rate housing is an issue, and again, there's got to be a happy medium here that we can come to with the landlords that are investing in these very, very old, old, expensive homes to redo, and what can we do to have a happy medium and to meet with them, meet them in the middle? I don't see the harm in at least having a discussion with the landlords themselves and getting just their general, other than just Steph and Glenda.
That will happen, after we get the information.
And I just think February, that's a long time to wait for a survey to come out, and then again, it's right before they assess all their fees and all, I just think it could be done quicker.
I guess the process, the process would be, you can meet, but what are you going to meet for? Because ultimately, until the city comes up with how we might, we might do business as a, as a, going forward as a policy, then it's just listening to landlords, maybe complain about fees, maybe talking about, I don't, any, any number of things, their properties, certainly, all landlords are not having a problem. Some landlords are having a problem, some aren't having a problem. I hear from landlords that are not, are not having a problem, and they think the certification thing works, but if they have to be, go through an inspection program, they're willing to do that. So, you know, it's, it's something that, when we look at the information we have, other peer communities, they're doing it, and they're doing it successfully, as I understand it. I mean, there's always going to be bumps, because we are in the process of, Mr. Brown is an enforcement officer, so that you're always going to have a little situation where you don't necessarily agree with what, what he is doing. I think ultimately, you have to look at the safety, health, and are we improving the housing stock going forward, "we" meaning the city. It's different when you rent to a, to a individual or a family versus me as an owner, putting my family in a home that I think is, is responsible. And that, that's what the difference, you know, there's some difference in a rental property where you're supposedly making money, maybe you're not making money, but then you have to make that decision whether you want to stay in business or sell the property, It's, it's a, it's a convoluted, it's a tough, it's a city attorney, it's a, it's a tough life in the rental business, and I certainly am not in the rental business, and don't want to be in the rental business, but ultimately, we want to make it better for everyone going forward, and we know, we hope that the, that the market rate units will come online in the near future, and I think that is on the horizon, I would think so. Anyway, we could talk about that forever, but, let's go to, let's go to Commissioner Gary.
I think, I think that the city manager's process is, is well thought out. We could certainly start driving this thing right now, and we, as a commission, could meet, and we could meet with the landlords, and we could drive it forward, but we're probably not going to come up with what they are looking for. So, I think his, the process that he designed is to get community input, and to get that information and work back the other way. So, so I think we are doing the right thing, we're asking for community input, we're asking for landlord input, instead of us just saying, this is the way we're going to do it, and we're driving it. So, we're asking for that, and unfortunately, I mean, it's November, February's not very far. So, I, you know, as far as process, I don't think that's unreasonable, actually, I think that's pretty quick, and I don't think that we need to rush through it, I think we want to have and end up with the right process, either, you know, reaffirm what we have, or go to a better process that...
And I think it was Commissioner Talantino that mentioned about the process, and it's important that we don't rush to this, and I think we are all in agreement at that point, that we want to be thorough, whatever we do, and get community input, you know, type of thing.
I understand that we want...
Commissioner Baker, was there, we'll come back. Anyone else want to make a comment? Commissioner Torri, and then?
Yeah, mostly just agree, I mean, the community improvement committee hasn't met for, since the last recommendation we sent forward, and they actually, we actually moved the meeting up by one week, so we're meeting tomorrow. So, I feel like the community improvement committee is kind of taking steps to move this forward as quickly as possible and send recommendations forward, but, you know, I really, Commissioner Talantino and I keep saying in those meetings that we want to make sure that it's done right, we want to make sure that we have a great policy put in place, and everybody needs to be able to weigh in, and even when you do a community survey, so if we're looking at the questions tomorrow, by the time you administer or get those questions or that survey out to the community, and you have to allow for response, and then you have to allow for the gathering of the information, and then the development of process. So, I mean, February's only three months away, I think it's going to take some time for those first few steps to get put in place. There will be ample opportunity, I think, to hear from all of the landlords, because it is, it is an important piece, so, but...
Without a question.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we all realize that we live in an older community, oldest in the state of Michigan, maybe oldest in the Midwest, and we have older homes that take an awful lot of effort and care and money to bring up to a standard. So, how we approach that is certainly going to be part of the, large part of the discussion.
Two last things. One, who's developing the survey? Is it the community improvement board, or is it administration?
City manager.
Great question. It's currently being developed internally, and it will be reviewed by the community improvement committee, and then forwarded to the city commission for authorization.
Second and last question, have we researched other peer communities, and there, do we have research on Marquette and Petoskey and those areas?
Our peer communities.
On their rental registration programs?
Correct, there's a very significant amount of research, which has been done, not just on what we consider to be our traditional peer communities. consider to be our traditional peer communities, but a number of communities throughout the state. And we've also taken a look at models that have been established in other localities throughout the United States.
Have you sent that to us?
Correct.
Yeah, we'll, we'll all get it and ultimately, the meetings that we have are all in public. And there is always ample time for public discussion, letting, letting the public discuss it when we're discussing it, when we have, you know, we ask for folks that would like to speak on that item and we also have public comment on the end of it. So, and that happens every meeting, but ultimately, we would hope that folks show up for that kinda thing. Commissioner Torri?
One more comment. I mean, along with looking at our peer communities, because Marquette is not necessarily one of our peer communities, because they are so much bigger than us, but we also have to take a look at university communities and then we also have to take a look at industrial communities, because we have the locks, we have Lake State University and we have the city that's our size. So, I know that Administration is looking at all of those different aspects when they're bringing it all in and trying to create a program.
Okay. Any others? Okay, thank you. Okay, Item G is the City Manager's report.
Thank you Mayor. Item one, under the City Manager's report would provide authorization to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of an exhaust filtration system. On this matter, Chief Labonte will present.
Evening Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Just have a short presentation for you. Try to keep this as brief as I can. Engine exhaust has been known to be harmful, at least to some degree, for decades. However, it wasn't until the results of carcinogen studies after 9/11 that both diesel and gasoline engine exhausts were proven to be as harmful as they're known to be today. Through studies carry out, carried out by the World Health Organization, OSHA, and the National Fire Protection Association, many products of gasoline and diesel exhaust are considered to be known carcinogens. Following in the wake of the tragedy on 9/11, multiple studies were conducted to find the sources of cancer for firefighters. And one of the largest carcinogen sources, besides those found in structure fires, were found to be in the air immediately after a vehicle or vehicles were started or while pulling out or backing into fire stations. Harmful exhaust particulate which comes from the exhaust systems and ambulances and fire apparatus were making its way all over the station, including the living quarters and many other stations and fire stations all over the United States. Over the last five to six years, the Environmental Protection Agency has placed mandates on vehicle manufacturers to add special diesel particulate filters to exhaust systems in order to lower the amount of harmful chemicals in outside air. However, these systems require exhaust gases and the exhaust system itself to get to a certain high temperature before this, this, this measure, this filter works, which can take anywhere from three to five minutes before the, the system is at working temperature. And until then, little to no, this particulate is burned off. It's going into the air inside the fire station. I must point out that over the, the last several years, we've tried to cut down on what gets in the station by not letting vehicles run inside for long periods of time, any longer than it would take to start the vehicle and get it outside. So, all of our equipment checks, despite the time of year, were all being carried out So, after the last few decades, in the last few decades, a few systems have been, have been developed with fire departments and emergency response in mind, including the Plimo Vent system as well as the Ward No Smoke system. As you can see in the picture there, the Plimo Vent system consists of a flexible hose, which you might see there in yellow, which attaches to each individual vehicle's exhaust and is routed to a collection point or collection points where the gases are mechanically blown outside. There are quite a few issues or downsides to the system. I'll outline, outline just a few. The system requires mounting within the fire station and is configured, and the configuration of the system cannot be changed without contracting ventilation or other similar, similar companies to make the necessary changes. So, anytime you wanna, you have to move a vehicle around, you're hiring somebody to come in and make changes. And fire apparatus and ambulances are traded between areas of the station quite often, so that would make that quite difficult. The final drawback to the system being confined to the station is that exhaust gases are, are not limited to just being confined at the fire station. Basically, what I mean by that is there are times when we take vehicles such as the, the fire trucks or ambulances into confined spaces. With the Plimo Vent system, this will not allow us to filter those exhaust gases when the vehicle is away from the station. Since the system is, is attached to the fire station, we're, we're only gathering those gases or those, that particulate while it's at the station. So, after a lot of research with the Plimo Vent system, there really are no clear advantages over other systems. The Ward No Smoke Exhaust System consists of a few different types of filters which are mounted in conjunction with each vehicle's exhaust and remain completely autonomous from the station. Different types of engines and existing exhaust, exhaust systems dictate which type of filtration system is installed. The model you see in the picture above would be installed on one of our fire engines or older ambulances. This system specifically consists of a diverter which is activated to direct exhaust gases toward the no smokes filter for a specific amount of time. So, at this system here, as soon as the truck is started, the diverter would send all the exhaust gases to the no smoke filter for about forty to fifty seconds, which is the amount of time it takes to start the truck and leave the station. After that, forty-five or fifty seconds is up, it automatically diverts the exhaust gases back to the regular exhaust, so it's not filtering things all the time. Also, the, the driver of the vehicle can also manually initiate the system just by the flip of a switch. So, if they are going into a building with a vehicle or in a confined space with a vehicle, they can, they can enact the system so the exhaust gases are filtered then as well. The second model is designed to be compatible with vehicles that have newer exhaust systems, like I talked about earlier, they, which don't filter particulate when the system is still cool. The third model of the system is designed for gasoline engines and exhaust systems. There are several major advantages to the Ward No Smoke Exhaust System. First, there is no need to have anything installed within the fire station. Second, ambulances and fire apparatus can also move to whichever bay is necessary without having to move exhaust systems. And third, if there are any changes or updates made to the fire station, such as a new addition, no considerations will be need, will need to be made for, for that addition. We can simply move the vehicles around as needed and, and not have to worry about it. It should be noted or mentioned that a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant was applied for to fund this, this project completely. However, we were not awarded any grant funding. As a backup, this project was budgeted for this fiscal year anyway, just in case. As you may have noticed in your commission packets, the Ward Filtration System is patented, making it available only through the Ward Company. Included in the quote, you'll not only find the cost of parts, but also complete installation of the filtration system on almost every department vehicle. And just to note, there only, there will only be two department vehicles that will not be receiving the, the installation if it goes through. One would be my command vehicle, which is kept outside, and our oldest ambulance, which we're planning to replace very soon. This is a very important project and this is something that should have been done decades ago. We have been subjecting firefighters to diesel exhaust particulate for some amount of time. This is the best system to, to handle that. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Torri?
Yes, just a couple of questions. So, I know that you've been working at our fire hall for quite some time now, but so have these been discussions like within the department of trying to avoid the particulates? I just wanna know, where, where did, where did this proposal arise from?
Great question. The city actually applied for a FEMA grant, the Assistance to Firefighters Program in 2012, and we were funded at that point in time. Along with that plan, at the time, it was thought that we were gonna be getting a new building. And due to language in the grant, they wouldn't allow us to move the system to the new building, which in my personal opinion is very silly, but nonetheless, the grant had to be turned down for that reason. So, the, the discussions about having some sort of collection system have been going on for quite some time.
Okay. And I guess I didn't have another question. I just wanted to say, good job, nice presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gary?
So, are these interchangeable when we get new rigs? We can transfer them from one to the other easily or?
That's a great question. They can be changed out, however, in what I've understood is we're better off getting the new vehicle with the system already in place. So, I know we're looking at a new ambulance here very soon. That would be specked out with that system in, in place as it comes, as well as any other new fire trucks would come from the manufacturer with the system in place.
Any other questions? City Manager or anything?
I would like just to thank the chief for his work on this project and the other improvement projects at the fire hall. Having spent time with the staff at the fire hall, I do understand that this purchase is very important to them and certainly, the first action would be my recommendation that the City Commission make a motion to suspend the competitive bidding process for this purchase in accordance with the city charter as the provider and contractor is a sole source provider of the system. And secondarily, that the commission make a motion to purchase the Ward Diesel Direct Capture Filtration System in the amount of $61,173.72, which is within the proposed budget and established budget.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Valentino, the first motion is to waive the competitive, competitive bidding process and as we all know, we'll need a five zero vote on that.
I'll make the motion to suspend the competitive bidding process for this purchase since the contractor is a sole source provider of the system.
Support.
Been moved to support or are there any questions? Roll call please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Commissioner Valentino.
Motion to purchase the Ward Diesel Direct Capture Filtration System for the amount of $61,173.72.
Support.
Been moved to support or questions? Commissioner Gary?
So, when these are activated, does it decrease or change the performance or inactivate the performance of the engine?
That's a great question.
Wondering why they couldn't put them in play all the time?
Exactly right. I asked the same, very same question from the manufacturer. There, like I mentioned earlier, there are three different types of systems. There's one that diverts for the older systems and then the, the second version of this does not divert. It's in place all the time. And the reason the ones, the certain ones divert is to make the, the life of the filter a little longer. I hope that answers your question, but yeah, depending on the, the engine and exhaust setup, it'll have a, a different model of this system in place.
Technology will be there someday. Scrubbers.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, under the City Manager's report would provide for the award of a bid for motor grater with wings. On this matter, DPW Director Mora will present to the City Commission.
Good evening. In this budget year, we budget for a brand new motor grater with a wing to replace one of our older, our oldest grater, which is a 1989 John Deere. That's, it's pretty much on our, on our last legs right now. Anyway, to prepare for the spec writing, last winter, we invited a number of grater dealers to come to the DPW so we could demo their, their, their equipment. And three, three vendors took us up on that. We had a Caterpillar, we had a John Deere and we had a Case grater. We had, and the John Deere we had for probably two weeks, the Case we had for a week and a half and the, excuse me, the John, the Cat we had about a week and a half and the Case we had for a solid, solid day and a half. And after everything was said and done, the staff really preferred the John Deere and the Cat. The Case grater really wasn't, it was really more for building roadways instead of moving snow. So, anyway, so with that information, we wrote a set of specs and we, we also talked to some contractors and we also talked to the Chipwak County Road Commission, who actually they're, the Case grater that we demoed was their grater. They, they just got a brand new. So, that's, that's the demo that we had and we had the factory rep with, there with us. So, anyway, so we opened, put out some bids and, or made a bid packet rather, and we put some line items in. The first one was fenders, front and rear fenders. Currently, our, our graders don't have fenders. They, it's okay for the operator, but for, for traffic behind people, we throw a lot of, a lot of stuff out. So, we put that in there. A 24-inch mold, mold board extension. The mold board is the, is the, is the underbody plow. And that extension can give you a little more plowing width to the left. We have the wing to the right, but that thing would go to the left a little bit. We just put it on there, see what kinda pricing we get. And then the third one was a front end push block and that's really nothing more than a big heavy counterweight on the front of the grater, so we can put more down pressure on the, if you look at, the bottom blade of a grater is a fulcrum. So, if, if you could lift that front end right off the ground, if you don't have that extra weight there, just start digging in the ice and stuff. Doesn't, you don't really need it so much on, on, on moving dirt and building roads, but when you're peeling ice, you want that, that weight there. Anyway, and we also put in a trade-in request for our 89 John Deere grater and an old 81 Cat loader that we had, that just, we, we use it at the wastewater treatment plant kinda as a last resort, because it's, she's, she's pretty tired. Anyway, we also asked for a lightly used piece of equipment. We, maybe we get a, a better deal on something, maybe a, like a year old, maybe two years old, kinda like we did on the demo unit a few weeks ago for the sidewalk blower. We got a pretty good deal on that because it was, you know, only had 50 or 60 hours on it. Anyway, so, City Clerk's Office released bids and we opened them up. We got five total bids, two from Cat and three from John Deere. On the Cat bids, the primary bid was a 2019 unit. It met all of our, our primary specifications and it's similar to the one that we demoed last, last winter. It's a fantastic piece of equipment. Their second bid was a five-year-old grater. It was a, the used unit, it's five years old. It was 50 grand less, but it was five years old, had pretty much a year of, of use on it. And so, and only had two years left of the warranty. So, we, even though it was cheap, we, we didn't think it was a good idea to, to go down that road. John Deere, the first bid was a 672, met all the specs. Again, excellent piece of equipment. It's just that it was too expensive. Second bid was a 2019 622. It's a smaller, it's got the same frame, but a somewhat of a weaker engine in it. And that was actually the, it doesn't meet our specs, but it was slightly cheaper with net pricing than the Cat dealer that we're gonna recommend. It was like 200 bucks or so. And their third bid, John Deere's third bid, was the demo unit that we did last year, was a 2017. It's a, it was a bigger grater than we wanted, but it, and was, it was too expensive. So, after we reviewed everything, we are recommending that we get the 2019 Caterpillar 12M3 with the line items from FABIC Cat of Marquette for 309,000. And we recommend the trade-in for the John Deere grater for 18,000 and the Cat loader for 7,500. So, with everything, the net cost would be 283,500 and we have 32, or 320,000 budgeted for it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of? City Manager? Thank you Jim.
Appreciate the excellent research of the DPW Director. And as the commission is aware, as stated in the memorandum, the, at the time the budget was developed for the current fiscal year, it was anticipated that this purchase would need to be financed. Because of the hard work of staff and conservation of resources, the Stock and Equipment Fund ended the last full fiscal year in a stronger position than anticipated. In conjunction with other projects coming in under budget and the trade-in values, we no longer feel that financing this equipment is desirable. Right now, we were currently projecting at the end of this fiscal year, Stock and Equipment would end with approximately $142,000. There would be $40,000 drawn that, drawn from that amount to purchase the equipment outright at this time, but because of the savings and the other projects coming in under budget, financing this would not be necessary at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing else. Thank you Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Torri?
Yeah, thank you. That's great news that we don't have to finance this piece of equipment. So, I'll make a motion to award the bid of a 2019 Cat 12M3 motor grater with wing from FABIC Cat of Marquette, Michigan for the total cost of 309,000 and approve the trade-in of a 1989 John Deere motor grater with the John Deere motor grader with the wing, with the wing, for eighteen thousand, and the trade-in of a nineteen-eighty-one Cat front-end loader for seventy-five hundred, for a net cost of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Support. Been moved supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three, under the city manager's report, would provide for the establishment of a budget and authorization to proceed with the downtown access and placemaking project grant, project. On this matter, City Engineer Basista.
Evening, Mayor, commission. So, for a few months, we've been working with our MEDC Cat team, Jen Tucker, Justin, DDA Director Justin Nepper, City Manager Turner, and myself, on a potential grant with, through the MEDC, on infrastructure improvements that have, that are primarily placemaking-focused. So, we came up with several projects that, in the downtown area, that we felt would fit the objective of the, of the grant offering, and I'm going to show on the screen, oh, it's hard, yep, okay. So, I'm going to, the first picture you're seeing, this, the DDA hired a person to put together some really nice renderings of the potential project. These are very conceptual in nature, but the first one is the Fire Hall parking lot, which has been on our capital improvement plan for a number of years, and has been a high priority for the DDA to reconstruct. We all know it's in very poor condition. So, the, the project would include the Fire Hall parking lot in Arlington between Osborne and Ashman. And the Arlington would also include, as MEDC agrees, is that, you don't want to build a road, or, well, we included the streets, because we said we could do the parking lots and the placemaking, but if they're surrounded by really bad infrastructure, what's the point of creating a little oasis in the middle of bad infrastructure? So, the project includes Arlington, and so, with Arlington, if we reconstruct Arlington, we also have nineteen-thirty-nine water and sewer, so the project includes replacing the water and sewer. So, some of the ideas for the placemaking, which, all of these need to be flushed out, of course, with the surrounding property owners, stakeholders, and so forth, but the idea is to blend the Fire Hall activities with the, you know, with the parking lot, and make it just a community, a community place within the, for the users of the parking lot, that includes the fire, firefighters. The second project proposed is what we're calling the County Plaza, and this is a really exciting concept, because Court Street between Spruce and, or Maple and Spruce is really just to access the parking lot and access the Court. So, I think we want to blur that line between road and parking lot, and just create a plaza that, you know, cars can use, as well as pedestrians, and add some rain gardens and trees, greenage, and paths for, for multi-use activity. The third project is, is also Court Street from Dawson to Spruce, and in the parking, the adjacent parking lot, and that, that is where our bus shelter is for Dial-A-Ride and UPTA. So, to clean up that space, make it very pleasing for, you know, users of the parking lot, the commercial businesses back there, having the road improved, and also a more pleasing place for the, the people waiting for the bus. The fourth project is Ann Street. Now, this doesn't include any parking lots, other than the, giving some aesthetic improvement to that angled parking on the portion of Ann between Helen and Ashman, but since we did the street scape on Ashman, and since the master, or the downtown, the, yeah, the, we did the street scape, and then there was the master plan for the new zoning, downtown zoning, that idea, that area was identified as a residential service area, and we have this, this huge residential area between Little Italy and on the east side of Bingham, that this Ann Street, redoing Ann Street, would provide that connection for those residences in those areas. And then last, we have, last we have OCA, which we've been planning for a number of years now, and in two thousand and fourteen, we applied for a CDBG DIG grant, Downtown Infrastructure Grant, but we were not successful with that, so we're going to try it again. And OCA, a large part of OCA is just getting some separation between the traffic and providing a place for pedestrians, that, including that sidewalk on the south side of the, of the businesses, the health department, and separating out that pedestrian traffic. And also, a huge part of that is, is burial of the overhead electric. And we've also, I've also included over, burial of overhead electric in the Fire Hall parking lot, and the Court parking lot as well, so that's been added. And so, again, these are very conceptual, cost estimates have been prepared for these. The next step in the process from MEDC is to, for a commitment for the matching, the matching funds. So, the total project estimate is five-point-five-five-five million dollars, and the match, the required match is ten percent, so the city's share would be five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. And we still have budget remaining in the OCA Alley Parking Plan budget of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We're proposing that the remaining city match come from the gaming funds, part of transportation, that we typically use for transportation, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred. And so, the motion that we would ask tonight is to set the budget, establish the budget, and, which commits to the local funds, and authorizes the administration to continue with the grant application policy. The next step for MEDC is to continue pitch, Jen would continue pitching the project with all of the information that they require, and then if successful, then we would get a letter of interest, and at that point, we would proceed with design. And it's not until you have the design done that you actually get the formal contract and all that. So, this is the point in which it would be appropriate for City Commission to approve, administration to actually apply for the grant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Linda? Commissioner Gary?
Is it probable? I mean, what is her?
Justin's worked a lot with Jen Tucker on her, on the facade grants, as you know, and all that, and I, frankly, when I heard about it, I thought, oh, this is, you know, five, you know, we're going to do a five-million-dollar grant, we're not going to get it, but Jen is very positive that she's really pushing for the UP projects, and not a lot of other communities have really put forth some decent projects, so we're hopeful, and at this point, we're not out anything, so.
Good.
It's worth going after.
Commissioner Torri?
Yeah, wow, so, what are you thinking? Usually, when you apply and you receive a grant, then you're looking at timeframe, and do we have three hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars in our gaming compact fund to put towards this project?
Yes, the money, the funds are there now.
The funds are there, okay, and I know the OCA budget is there, so, wow, this is pretty exciting.
Now, you can leverage four-hundred, four-million, five-hundred-thousand dollars, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, makes a big impact. I'm looking for some street projects like Fourth and Meridian.
Well, this, I have to say, I mean, we're very fortunate, because we don't normally get transportation grants for local streets. And Court is a local street, Ann Street is a local street, these are all local streets. And usually, our transportation grants can only be used toward, on our major streets, federal aid streets, so it's an opportunity to get these streets done.
Okay, city manager, any other questions first?
Certainly appreciate the work that the department has involved on this. It takes a considerable level of skill to put a proposal like this together, and the advocacy of Ms. Tucker with the MEDC, I think that she approaches it in a very beneficial way, especially relative to other experiences that we've had with MEDC, and I think it's just been a great experience overall. And one note about the budget, the gaming fund, does, this three hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars would commit the full amount in gaming for this current fiscal year, which we would anticipate in the next fiscal year would be receiving new revenue, but it does commit the full amount, but then again, it does leverage it to obtain over five mil, approximately five million dollars in grant funding for a project.
Have we talked to the Sioux Tribe at all about possibly a cooperative effort, if some of these streets, like the Court Street?
It's my understanding that recently, there was a meeting involving engineering or Sioux Tribe, or that there will be, to align the capital improvement plan with the transportation improvement plan.
Because they have, what, BIE funds, I think, sometimes, that we're able to access?
Right, so I asked Wendy Hoffman, she's the transportation planner, and made sure that Court Street is on their, on their tip, transportation improvement plan. Especially, I don't know if they can actually get the funds to then match this grant, but, especially if we don't get the grant, to get it in line on their tip for doing it, you know, outside of this grant, potentially, so.
And it wouldn't stop us from, if they came up with some grant money, we could replace some of our other monies?
Oh, absolutely, if we can get any, come up with other, other funds, yeah.
Sure, okay, thank you. Any other questions? City manager, or anything?
Nothing, thank you, Your Honor.
And we have a motion to support? No? Let's go to Commissioner Baker.
Motion to approve a budget of five-point-five-five million for the city's downtown access and placement project, with the source of the funds to come from the CDBG grant, in the amount of four million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars, and local match of five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, from the existing OCA budget. Hundred and seventy-nine thousand in gaming, three hundred and seventy-six, five hundred, and authorize the city administration to continue the MEDC, CDBG grant process.
Support.
Been moved supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you.
Item four, under the city manager's report, would provide for the approval of an initiatory resolution to begin the special assessment process for Hyde Street Sanitary Sewer Extension. Again, City Engineers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I had, Mr. Bittner contacted me regarding his properties up on what would seem, what you might want to call it Foss Hill, but they're behind properties that are on Thirteenth Street, they're accessed off of Hyde, as you go up the hill to, like, Mitre's Tree Farm. I'm sorry, I did not provide a map. He is in need of sewer service, is part of, he's two failing, or inadequate septic fields that he has, and he's working on adding, putting, making additions, improvements to those two houses that he acquired a year or two ago. And so, since he asked about public sewer, and it's not there currently, then I've also am familiar with Tracy Holt, Superior Health Systems, their plans to potentially build another house, like they built just recently, residential carehouse. And so, I contacted her to find out what, what their plans are, and she said, for the additional house, they're looking at three to five years out for the additional house, but within one to two years, they're looking at putting a training facility in the location, it fronts Hyde Street, where they have a garage off of their Hyde Street driveway. So, because they already have one long sewer service for the house that they're, they already built, and the house that's out, the private, single-family residential home also has a private use agreement for extending their sanitary sewer service down Hyde to get to the Sixth Avenue sewer. Our longstanding policy has been to allow only two hookups to public main sanitary or water via a long service line to, on a right-of-way before, before a public sewer or main has to be constructed. So, that's been our longstanding policy. So, between Mr. Bittner, who needs service for two parcels, and the Superior Health Systems that has, is looking at a year or two out from needing another sanitary sewer service hookup, then now is the time, as far as to extend the sanitary sewer down Hyde Street from Sixth Avenue, and it would be, as per all extensions of public mains, would be a hundred percent special assessment. City Engineering Department would do the design and, and the plans, and then the city could bid, would bid it out, and it would be a hundred percent special assessment. There are currently seven or eight parcels or services that would be affected. So, if you are inclined to potentially proceed, I would ask that you make a motion to initiate, initiate the public improvement by special assessment, and that would direct administration to then prepare plans, cost estimates, and present at the next meeting a proposed way that the formula for assessing for the, to the benefiting property owners at the next meeting, and then, then proceed with setting a public hearing of necessity. In the meantime, we will be contact, if you approve tonight, then we will be contacting the rest of the property owners to let them know that this would be coming, and start, initiate discussions with them.
I guess, a question I have, the, the property owners, other than the ones you've been talking to, when you talk about putting in a sewer that you're going to pay a hundred percent for between minimum of maybe six, six people, six, because empty?
Seven to eight properties.
Seven to eight properties.
I have to look at the.
Do you have a ballpark on what that might, I mean, there's some single-family homes versus larger properties?
We're looking at.
Whether they afford?
Potentially, ten to twelve thousand dollars per home.
Yes.
But during the, initiating this process, we'll, we'll actually do a cost estimate. Right now, it was just a very rough hundred dollars a foot, and, and seven to eight properties.
Yeah, there's, it's not, it's not anywhere, we've not committed at that point, and probably people will have a chance to see what they're.
You would not be committed until you pass the resolution, following the hearing of necessity. So, this would come before you three, two more times, before you, at the third meeting, you would, if you're planning to go forward, that would be the hearing, public hearing, and then you would, at that point, make the fine, decision to move forward.
Okay, I understand. Any questions? Commissioner Gary?
This is at their request, though, this is not mandatory hookup, correct?
Right.
And I think if you look at the cost of putting in a new septic system, it's, it would exceed that cost.
Well, no question. Oh, you'd be at least close to it, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's shocking, ten to twelve thousand, but it's. Yeah. So, I mean, it's shocking, ten to twelve thousand, but it's not as much as an advanced system that would be required in that area.
Especially back there. That area is very wet. And so, the Health Department would, in that area, require a mounded system.
Right.
It's, be very expensive. So, there's two vacant lots right now, and that would, could benefit from, you know, maybe have stir development of new homes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to initiate a public improvement by special assessment, directing the City Manager and City Engineer to prepare reports of the proposed improvement to present at the November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen City Commission meeting.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
A question for the City Engineer. If you could, and thank you for your flexibility in returning. If you could please provide an update on the business for, I-75 business for reconstruction.
Yeah, as long as you were there, I would have you come back up. Thanks.
So, the roundabout is currently operating, except for the three-mile road leg. And that's the last portion that they're working on currently. And they'll plan to open that later this week, towards the end of the week. It will get opened with temporary pavement because it's, they can't, just can't do the full base. So, next spring, they'll come back and finish that on a permanent basis. Right now, the roundabout itself is, the pavement markings are for a single-lane roundabout. So, they're filtering traffic only into the single lanes. But when they come back next year to do the final wearing course, the final paving, it'll get opened up as a two-lane roundabout. But for the winter, it'll be a single-lane roundabout, twofold, because not everything is, you know, is completed. And that, this way, they can keep the vehicles off the outside edge where the water is going to pond from not having the final paving down. As far as the rest of the spur, right now, it's operating in a three-lane section, one lane in each direction with a center-left turn lane. That's also temporary for the winter. That was to get traffic off of the outer lane where there is curb, where it hasn't been final paved. And they're not going to do the curb, you know, this, before closing for the, closing down for the winter on the west side. So, those businesses on the west side have also temporary pavement down to, for their driveways. And the driveways on the east side have gotten their final wearing course. So, we don't have the bump, bump, sidewalk bump. So, that will, you know, protect the sidewalk. So, those will be easier to plow. So, this is their last week for any paving because the asphalt plant is, said they are closing Friday, maybe it'll close Saturday. If there's still some temporary pavement still to go down, especially on three-mile road, the three-mile road leg. But pretty much what you're seeing now is, other than some minor tweaking, is what we're going to see for, for the winter.
Commissioner Gary?
So, there was some ponding on the west side today, obviously, a lot of rain. And then how are you going to keep people from digressing off of the paved portion into the gravel portion? Are they going to have cones or some more stable structures that will?
Well, there wouldn't be barriers, but they are talking about, rather than using the barrels, they're looking into using the vertical delineators that actually get attached to the pavement so that when, they're not going, resetting barrels all the time in cones. So, they're looking into that now. I don't know if that's the final decision, but.
I know that DPW is very careful. But how, how do you prevent the, that lip of concrete from being destroyed along the entire roadway? I mean, do they have to replace that in the spring then, when they're redoing the project?
Well, since, since they're, they brought the traffic in, they're not going to be plowing it. So.
There's still lip there. I mean, you're going to catch that with the plows.
They won't be plowing there.
I mean, the curb edge, right?
Yeah. The.
Inside that. Everybody's inside that.
So, the, right now, that all the traffic is more in the middle in that, there's half or more lane delineated from.
But it may not even be our trucks. I mean, what if the front-end loaders are scraping or doing something? They're going to catch those.
They're, oh, at the driveways, yes. At the driveways, when they're plowing, they still have that one lip from, yes. And, and they just have to be careful.
Project?
I'm not. If it's beyond repair. We've done it in the past, you know, we've done it on our CSO projects. And it's really not that bad. There are some chips and so forth out, but nothing that is structurally detriment to, to the curb that we've experienced, so.
Well, at least they put the top coat by the sidewalk edges.
Yes. That, and that, that is what I was really pushing for because they were talking about not doing those and doing, making some other things a priority. And that was my one thing that I kept pushing at the last few meetings was getting those, that top course down on those driveways. So, I was at least successful in that.
Commissioner Talentino?
I seen they were breaking up the rest of the concrete up there today. So, is M&amp;M going to continue to work as long as they possibly can? Is that their plan at this point?
They're, they're, they still have some storm work. Some of that, the storm sewer isn't completely across the road. So, they're going to be working on storm crossings. And those will just get filled in with gravel. It's not where they're driving. So, yeah, they'll keep working as long as they can.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
Item five, under the City Manager's report, is provide for a review of draft asset management plans for Anni Osborne Campground, Ann Park, Sherman Park, Malcolm Park, and Rotary Island Park. Honest Matter, Parks and Recreation Director Wires.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. With direction given by the City Commission, this summer, we started on a project putting together the asset management plans for at least four of our larger parks. The Sioux Seal Recreation Area is not in this four, but it is something I'm currently working on. One of the things I'd like to start out with is Anni Osborne Campground, Ann Park, Sherman Park, Malcolm Park, and Rotary Island Park. And the parks, as you've had a chance to see in your packet, each park is broke down. And some are more lengthy, lengthy than others, and it's, they've been detailed in an inventory. And that was a bit time-consuming, but very rewarding because pretty much, unless we're missing something, or it's really pretty much everything is in there. Things that we found that maybe didn't know that we even had. So, it was a good process. And I wanted to go through this, and I'm going to kind of pick off just the Anni Osborne Campground and Park as an example to go through this. And the fact that we started out with a conditional assessment rating. And this is a scale of one to five. And it's a rating that, of one indicates an asset in excellent condition, basically brand-new. Whereas you go all the way to five, it indicates an asset that's in poor condition and it's near the end of its lifespan. In the next column, you have visual and aesthetic rating, and also the functional rating. The rating, those are also on a one to five scale. Rating of one indicates an asset that's lowest criticality or that it's lost would have minimal impact on operations. A rating of five indicates an asset that's lost will severely hamper or stop our operations, meaning we cannot live without it. And something of that nature would be like electricity. Electricity, we really pretty much need in a campground. I have two examples. One is, let's say, like a picnic table. Picnic table, the visual impact of a picnic table is rather high. They dress up a campsite, helps with the camp, camping guest's first impression of the condition and operations of the park. You know, who wants to sit down on a bad picnic table? Usually, that's a sample rating is on the higher side, on a five, when it comes to visual aesthetic. Functionally, the question is, can we live without this table? We can, but it would be difficult. It would not completely mess up the operation versus a complete shutdown, let's say, of a water or electricity that you would certainly need. So, you can see, these ratings can be high. They are normally a necessity of parks' operation. Sample rating for a picnic table, functionally, would be a four. So, when you start to look at these, you can see where, how meaningful it might be. Yes, you could look at these and start looking at subjectivity. But taking a look at it with the number of items that are in these, you see where it can get quite lengthy. And also, you could look at, one of the other options that we looked at is trees. You look at the trees throughout the park with the criticality ratings. If you have limited trees in the parks, say at Anni Osborne Campground, we have a lot of trees. We have a great big tree that came down, it's dead, and it's laying there now. A lot of trees really don't grow in that type of soil. So, that is very important to us, that we look at putting some trees in there. Functionality, trees really don't have any impact on the ability to continue operations, but there's also good for shade in that. So, again, it's the detail in going through this. The last two columns are the criticality ratings. And this is taking the, the two ratings are conditional assessment rating multiplied by the functional rating and the conditional assessment rating multiplied by the visual aesthetic rating. Without trying to get too, too deep into this, it basically starts to look at, taking these items and seeing how really, how important they are, but also, at the same time, what type of a shape they're in and how important they are to the park. In the four parks that you did get this evening, the current asset management replacements for each plan, it's plotted out on a spreadsheet, basically taking your top, your higher-rated top numbers and looking at those, and then put those into a 10-year. Basically, I know the City Commission, we've been doing a six-year capital improvement plan. This is taking these, these parks and putting into a 10-year plan. And so, some things, we're not going to really need to take a look at, probably now for six, seven, eight years, maybe out to 10. Some of them we need to do now. One of the detailed things I did with all four of these is I did go back, and I took and retraced back and put into the four plans, the current six-year CIP projects. So, if there's something, say, that's been scheduled for this coming year for, say, Malcolm Park or any of these parks, it's in this plan as well. So, there's a lot of detail. And this is something where, this is, it's good information. And it's certainly some things that brought some things to light. And certainly, we're going to be able to take a look at these. City, the Community Services Board has supported this, and I think it's a wonderful idea because I know that for the last few years, they've talked about taking care of the things that we have. So, this is a big start.
Commissioner Gary?
Nice work. That's a, boy, they're a lot longer than I had anticipated. It's, that's good. Now, when we look at the final CIP then, I'm assuming, because this is based on, on the actual condition now, if we are comparing all the parks together and we're looking at the overall, you know, CIP, then we're going to look at, how do we assign, I guess, the actual usage and need of the park versus the, you know, some of the, we might have a very ill-utilized little place. It needs a lot of work, but maybe the public doesn't use it as much. So, how are we going to compensate for that in the final plan, I guess? Because these are individual plans, but they all have to fold up into the big plans.
Well, this, the six-year CIP has already gone out the door, I believe, to, I may have already gone to the Planning Commission. That's already kind of in process. Again, just due to the timing, these four are done and complete. And at some point, would be baked into probably the budgeting process. Some of them are already in here, like, I think all four of these, or at least two or three of these parks already have six-year CIP items in them. So, this is going to start to dovetail more detail into the six-year capital improvement plan. And you know, it's like anything else, something happens. I mean, there's boilers in here, there's hot water heaters in here. If something goes down, that could get moved up. It could certainly be. So, it's, it's going to be a work in progress. And it's something that would come to the Commission, at least at budgeting time, at least going forward this year.
Gives you more detailed information so that you can build a CIP with.
And goal-setting this, these offers will be information we.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your work.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, well, yeah. Also, thank you for your work. I know we saw these last week at the Community Services Board. And that was, I guess that was one of the questions that I wanted to ask. So, as we move, as, as the department heads and the City Manager work through the capital improvement process, and then, you know, they, they create the preliminary budget for us to sit down and take a look at. If we don't happen to see some of these items that you've ranked into this year's capital improvement, not, not to fear, right? You still have an asset management plan. They just maybe didn't make it right into the budget this year for whatever reason, this one reason or not. But, but these are all, you're still keeping these assets, taking a look at what we need. And if it doesn't get slated, you just move on it next year when it can be done.
Yes. It's, some things may, and again, some of it can be subjective, Commissioner. It's a very good question. Some of these may be able to slide a year or so. And in putting this together, and I, no, this isn't necessarily just me. Jim Morrow is one who helped put this together and give me the tools to put this thing together to get it to you. So, there, there's things that we could move around as an aid be. And sometimes, things happen, and we want to, we need to push it up quicker, or we can push it back a year or so. So, that's something that can be discussed at budget time. And there's a lot more detail to it. Lot more detail in this, and this is only four.
Yes.
City Manager, you have any?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Manager?
Just appreciate the work of the Public Works leadership on this project. Certainly, a lot of detail, and has been discussed. It certainly is very informative. As the CIP and the budgets are developed, the more that the six-year capital improvement plan is built upon using information along these lines, just continues to improve the entire process and add further logic to it.
Anyone else have a question? Motion, motion, Commissioner, Commissioner Baker?
Motion to approve the asset management plans as established for Anni Osborne Campground, Sherman Park, Malcolm Park, and Rotary Island Park.
Support. The move's supported. Any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And the final item under the agenda for City Manager's report is the closed session regarding the State of Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Goodwill Company, also known as Meyer. So, City Attorney Canelo and I would like to consult with the City Commission on the Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Meyer and the City of Sioux-Saint Marie and related trial and settlement strategies in closed session. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation, at the end of the meeting, to enter into closed session in order to discuss trial and/or settlement strategies as pertaining to the State of Michigan Tax Tribunal case with Goodwill Company, Inc. in accordance with Section 8E of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act. And should be noted that, following this closed session, City Commission would be requested to reconvene in open session to take action on this.
Okay. Commissioner Twardy?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the City Manager's recommendation.
Support.
The move's supported. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And one further update from the City Manager's report. Just a reminder that the Patronicity fundraising effort for the improvement in Malcolm Park is ongoing. And individuals are able to contribute at www.patronicity.com through December 1st for this effort.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll try and remember the, we'll try and go as a group, I think we talked about, and maybe next meeting. Anybody who wants to contribute to the, I think, administration, some staff and commission will be, would just be City Sioux-Saint Marie staff and commission employees type of thing. Okay? If you'd like to. Okay?
And that concludes the City Manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Item number H, status reports.
Thank you, Mayor. First item under status reports is an update regarding the International Bridge Bus Operations and Improvements. As Commissioners are aware, administration has been working closely with the Community Action Agency and the International Bridge Administration over the course. Agency and the International Bridge Administration over the course of the past 12 to 15 months to maximize the impact of the bridge bus. Actions taken to improve the public benefit from the bus service include and included researching live internet-based notifications, expanding marketing, expanding social media awareness and implementing a student rate. In addition, route modifications were closely studied in order to determine the effectiveness of the current service route. This service depends upon a high degree of collaboration involving the city, community action, the International Bridge Administration and the Michigan Department of Transportation. For example, the city, the IBA and MDOT have each contributed an annual cash subsidy to support the service ranging from $14,700 in 2012 to $17,100 in 2015. In fiscal year 2017, the total expense for operating this service was just approximately $127,000. This was funded through the cash subsidies of the partners, state transportation funding, federal transportation funding and rider fares and a small level of miscellaneous revenues. In addition to those sources, the IBA also authorizes the bridge bus to cross the bridge free of charge at an average expense to both the IBA and MDOT of roughly $55,000 per annum. These contributions are significant commitments made to join the twin Sues through a reliable transportation service with the potential to benefit residents and stakeholders in both communities. Despite earnest efforts to maximize the impact of the bridge bus, preliminary figures for fiscal year 18 show a further drop in ridership, with preliminary figures for fiscal year 18 demonstrating a decrease in 24.2% in ridership between the most recently completed fiscal year and the previous fiscal year. Looking back further, it should be noted that ridership in fiscal year 2008 was over 7,000, which represents a decrease of almost 56% since fiscal year 2008 and this time. It is theorized this drop in ridership has resulted from enhanced security measures being implemented at the border crossing, an increasing tendency for people to purchase products online and the decrease in Canadian residents crossing the border to attend classes at LSSU, among other possible factors. It is clear that the operating model for the bridge bus requires responsible modification to a more cost-effective and logical structure. At the same time, service partners are cognizant of the benefit the bridge bus provides to many populations within both communities. Significant changes will be required, which may include establishing a smaller number of fixed route runs, curtailing service for times during which there are consistently few or no riders, or replacing the existing bridge bus with vans, which would be more cost-effective and logical for a streamlined service. Modifying the structure will almost certainly reduce the cash subsidies required from each partner and further generate savings on vehicle maintenance, fuel savings and other operational aspects, and would also help to reduce the per-rider subsidy. It is important to emphasize that these changes represent a natural evolution in how the bridge bus service is delivered within the context of the multitude of changes that are occurring at the local level in the local transportation sector over the past decade. Many stakeholders remain invested in this service and interested in yielding its maximum impact at an optimal cost. Concurrently, the project partners should expect that cash subsidies would decrease as these changes are implemented and should expect that the delivery model will adapt to meet a reduced ridership demand. Accordingly, it's anticipated that a reduced cash contribution, up to a maximum of $15,000 per partner for the upcoming federal fiscal year would be proper if a cogent plan for the streamlining of service is developed, contingent upon respective approvals from governing authorities. Further, it's anticipated the cash subsidy per partner can be reduced as the scope of the service is altered to reflect local realities. Importantly, it's reasonable to expect that an action plan for modifying the current service should be developed by December 31st for more immediate implementation. Modifications will be made with the consideration that ridership may increase in the future, at which time increased service levels or cash subsidies may be discussed by each partner. Certainly, public feedback will be taken into consideration as the service continues to meet the needs of the community in an optimal fashion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it was, that's an excellent PowerPoint presentation that you put together that you're going to be taking with you, I understand?
Thank you.
What's the date on that? For the, do you know when the meeting is going to be?
It's this Thursday?
Oh, it is?
At nine o'clock.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Second item under status reports is an update regarding the Hickler family mausoleum. On this matter, Mr. Wires will present to the City Commission.
Daniel?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an update that, from a project, that, an item that came to you back in September 18th of 2017.
Yep, what are your goal?
And it's pretty detailed and I, I believe we're going to work on getting a picture of this. Picture of the, the Hickler family mausoleum at the Riverside Cemetery and this, I believe the Commissioners received a detailed packet, basically the same project that we had from last year. And what we're, you know, this deed on this mausoleum dates back to 1913. And this is one of the oldest mausoleums that we have there in the cemetery. And certainly it's one of these issues that under our rules and regulations at the Riverside Cemetery, that the, any type of a mausoleum, there's an endowment fund and I believe this mausoleum was built before the endowment fund was even enacted. And I believe that was back in the, the 50s and currently there is only $3,681 in the, in this fund for any type of, that was established to, to help assist in taking care of some of these mausoleums. So this process is something that we've been looking at for quite a few years. It's not something we necessarily enjoy and want to do, but certainly we reached out to the Hickler family. We did send a letter to the last known Mrs. Dream Hickler that was out in California. Of course, it was sent certified letter, it came back, was not answered. So there's a lot of things here that's quite dated. And certainly it's a, it's a process by, you see the photo here, the update from last year at this time, and I have some other photos where really realistically the, this mausoleum is crumbling before our eyes. And so we, this year, the spring, what we did is I had the cemetery staff stake this off, tape this off, so really we can't get people close to it. Our city staff are, is mowing the grass around it. We are taking care of the mausoleum from the outside. I really, and, and some of the photos that you did see from originally on this project, some of the marble and everything is giving way inside. I don't believe it'd be safe to put a city employer or anybody inside the mausoleum anymore and literally the door, something that we've secured. And it's something, the good news is, is that this, it's still standing. When, when it might want to do something more, we really don't know, but from last year to this year, it is starting to crumble. It would still be my recommendation and the staff's recommendation that at some point this mausoleum get taken down. And I would, I would recommend that we do take it down and we do that probably this spring because it's such a late in the season. We could consider looking at maybe budgeting it, the same budget number and do it through the perpetual care, do it sometime this spring until, or when we can, when we open up for the season. But the good news is, is that the, the family does own lots that are there. So there's other lots that are there. The worst that could be done is the folks would be taken out and then they would be re-interred right there where the mausoleum is. And it's something where, could it be another year? Could it be another five or 10 years? So just in one year, started to crumble. So there's, it's becoming more unsafe and it's certainly something we're keeping an eye on, certainly something that staff's recommendation would be to do the same. So I just wanted to give you an update, see the photos, it's kind of where we're at.
I sort of remember the discussion and it's, when I, when I see the colored pictures of it, it hasn't changed much from what it was before. There's some crumbling on the outside around the grass area, but it's still standing straight. And in front of it, there's no, the, the roof part that's coming off and little pieces must be on the backside toward the ditch. Not having, the neat thing about this is that it's at the end of the, from the far south end of the cemetery. Only thing be, around it or behind it is the ditch area where no one goes. It's, it's taped off right now. I think, you know, it's, they're saying that don't go near it and staff shouldn't go in it, you know, type of thing, I see that. I just hate to tear it down at this point. It may stand another 10 years. The inside was crumbling before and we saw how the, some of the shelving and stuff, however that was inside there was falling apart, but it may, you know, the wind may take care of it, but it looks pretty substantial. It's not leaning in any direction. It's not tilting, you know, from the ground moving. So to just, maybe, I know family members of the Madigan family just redid one of the older, larger tombs, well, not, wasn't a mausoleum, but it's one of the larger stones and had a, a person come in and, and re-cut the, the cross that fell and off, fallen off and stuff and redid it. And that was, it was several hundred dollars, I think four, 500, but people put that money up and it's been redone and it's, it looks good. Mausoleum's a whole lot different than a small stone, but maybe, I don't know if the family is alive or any residents, but all of a sudden somebody got a bug and put, contacted other family members and, and that stone was taken care of and not knowing who the, you know, who was the, who you're related to 100 years ago. And they're different, the names weren't the same, you know, so.
We did put out, I believe in the Sioux News, an advertisement to try to bring some people forward. And again, Mrs. Dream Hickler, she was the last known.
Is she alive or, we don't know?
I'm, this was back in the 40s. I'd been saying she's, I don't, I don't believe she's alive.
When we sent, when we sent the certified mail, came back to us?
Yes.
Was a reason they couldn't find them or they wouldn't sign it or?
Unopened, it was non-deliverable.
Okay.
No, and I think at this point, Mayor, you bring up some good points. You know, and who really knows? It could be another year, it could be another five, but you know, the update is it's starting to crumble. Safety is as big on our concern. Certainly we do have a responsibility for the two folks that are in there, but it's, it's one of those tough issues because, you know.
Are they in caskets inside?
There's two.
Caskets?
Two people, yes.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Twardy? Don't leave it at that.
I remember this a year ago and I think it's important to make sure that we're keeping the city safe and city staff safe and that you're not going in there without having to mow the grass even around the area. But yeah, talking about, you know, taking the mausoleum down and moving these folks just really, yeah, makes, makes my blood pressure go up. But I understand also that we do have a responsibility to these people and we should, I just like the watch and wait and watch kind of theory on this.
It's a good point, Commissioner. We could come back in six months. I, I don't know if there'd be something we'd really want to do now. Maybe sometime this spring we could take another look at it, but it is certainly something that we're not, you know, we're not able to get in there, you know, we're not really doing anything. So it's really, it's going to be a time issue, certainly, and whatever the Commission would like to do, but it's, it's not going away. It's something that's confronting us, yes.
Thank you for the update. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gary?
We need to do, we need to do something. I mean, it's, it's not acceptable to have a mausoleum and have yellow police tape around it, you know? That's, it's disrespectful. So I think we as a commission, I mean, it was a year ago we talked about it, nothing happened and it's not gotten any better. So we need to either figure out a way to fortify this and, and protect it or, or re-enter them. I think we owe it to them.
We could wait six months. We really aren't going to do anything with it now anyway.
Right.
Sometime this spring revisit it. It may be the same, but certainly it's something that, you know, we're, we're keeping a close eye on it certainly because it's a.
I think, I just a thought, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has those thousands of people that they contact with. What about, just a picture of that mausoleum with a family name, Hickler family somewhere that we can, and distribute it to some, you know, just to blow it out there, I don't know how you do that, but get to some of those people that they travel to the city. They, they may have come and gone and all of a sudden they see something. I don't know if that's possible, maybe talking to Zach, maybe talking to Linda at Convention and Visitors Bureau and see what, just to, they have a larger source than we might have of people looking at a website and you never know. We got, we got at least six months, maybe next spring. I mean, bring it back if you'd like and not going to do much this winter, I gotta believe. Springtime, six, next May, take a look at it? When you open the cemetery again?
Can do.
Okay? Okay? Is that something that's Commission comfortable with? Consensus is yes?
Yep.
Thank you.
And the third item under status reports is an update from EDC Executive Director Holt regarding activity at Sanderson Field and at the EDC.
Evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Thank you for this opportunity. I've got Sarah Shepherd here to, to guide the PowerPoint here, so appreciate it, Sarah. The last few months, the EDC and the airport have been pretty active and curtain, certain events and we'd like to, to give you an update on the events that we have had here in the last few months. And we also look forward to doing these events again in 2019 due to their success. And as information, if, if someone wants further information on these events, check sueedc.com or our EDC office, 635-9131. We'd be glad to answer any questions. Our first is on Friday, September 28th, we had a open house, movie in a hangar. This is our third year of doing this and we had over 150 folks visit the site. And as you can see, our police department was, did a great job in displaying their, their activities. The airport, airplane owners allowed the, mostly the children to go into the aircraft and, and take a look and, and be real hands-on with the event. Of course, our fire department was there as well and did a wonderful job. The folks that, that operate our emergency equipment are, are so great with the kids and the look on the kids' faces and the adults were, were amazing. And we were real pleased with the efforts that they provided and thank you so much for them. You'll see inside our hangar, the renters of the, of the space in the main hangar, the box hangar, allow us to move the aircraft out of the facility and let the, the families enjoy the movie. And, and I've often said, I'm not sure who enjoys the movie more, the kids or the, the parents and the adults. It's pretty amazing. And the, we also sell refreshments up there as well to help defer the cost of it. The next day, Saturday, the 29th, we had fall color aerial tours and we did approximately 25 of the 20-minute flights and at a cost of $25 per person, it is certainly a, an amazing bargain for folks to take a look at, an aerial view of our, of our amazing community. And the pilots donated their time to, to do that and we were so appreciative and we, we got so much positive feedback on it. And the proceeds go to the Young Eagles program for training folks to fly. There's some photographs of the, of the area that was taken in flight of the aircraft. Pretty, pretty amazing stuff. On October 3rd, we had our annual manufacturing excellence event and it was at the Sioux Country Club this year. And you can see by some of the attendees that we had tremendous attendance of area folks. And we, part of our goal is, is networking of our manufacturers and presentations on key and critical areas that affect our local manufacturers. And our mayor has indicated that for every dollar spent in manufacturing, a dollar 89 is generated in our economy. So manufacturing is a, is a good deal for us. And with over 700 manufacturing jobs in our. And with over 700 manufacturing jobs in our community, they have, they provide quite an economic impact for us. As we do every year, we do a survey of the attendees that, that went to the event, and you'll see the numbers that, that we provided, the service that we provided was, was relevant. And the interesting statistic is 64% are more motivated, more motivated to, to get involved in manufacturing, which is an amazing number. Here are some of our networks that we, that we connect with this event, and most of these folks attended this, this event for us, and we were pleased and impressed that they were, that they were attending. Here are some photographs. On the upper left is Clover and Electric. On the upper right, you'll see some folks that are, are looking at some of the displays. And of course, on the lower right, our mayor kicks this event off every year with a, with an awesome speech, and we always appreciate that.
Thank you.
Here are some of the preventer, or presenters of the event. You'll see on the upper left is Michigan Economic Development Corporation. On the middle, a division of the MEDC is the Town and Economic Development Department, or TED. Upper right is the Michigan Manufacturers Association, which has been tremendously supportive of our efforts here in the Sioux. And on the bottom, the general manager of TN Michigan, which is Hoover, which was, some of us remember years ago, Alterspherix. And they've been around for 40 years, and they do a tremendous job in their, in their And you'll see the timeline of TN Hoover, Alterspherix, and it's hard to believe that the Hoover's been around here, or Alterspherix has been around since 1978, so most of us were just babies then. And you'll see a slide here on all of their, we talk about worldwide activities right here in Sault Ste. Marie. You'll see some of the areas that they ship to and do business with and have factories at, and it's truly amazing. And last but not least, the event, when we started this manufacturing appreciation, it started in our economic development offices, I think Tony and Steve may remember, was cookies and coffee. And we've come a long way, and our event sponsors have made that possible, and we're really appreciative of it. They have actually collaborated together, several of the manufacturers after each event, and collaborate with each other, which is tremendous, so.
No, it was, let me just add, it was, it was a great time, you know, the commission was there, and every year, it's, it's grown, and it's just, it's a very nice time and a chance to showcase the manufacturers that are in the area. And we're talking about area, not just Sault Ste. Marie, because Chippewa County, EDC.
Mm-hmm. With Sioux Ontario.
Sioux Ontario, yes.
EDC were there.
Yeah.
And were very supportive of us as well.
Excellent. Continue the partnership.
Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks. See, manager? Got you.
That concludes the status report section of the agenda. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item I, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that can make a comment? Sure.
I just have a question. I was wondering, who are the members of the Community Improvement Board? I, through being at the meetings, I know it's Commissioner Talantino, Commissioner Twardy, but who else attends?
City Manager.
Who else?
So members of the Community Improvement Committee, as you noted, Commissioners Talantino and Twardy are members, myself, the city attorney, police chief, fire chief, community development director, the building official, the office coordinator will attend meetings at certain points, and the citizen rep is Pat Shemins.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Item number J, matters presented by the City Commission. Let me just begin by just reminding, the Community Veterans Assembly at the high school, just normally a very well-attended assembly put on by Sioux Area High School. It'll be on the Friday, the 9th this week, and, because Veterans Day is on Sunday, the traditional Veterans Day on the 11th of November. And so Sioux Area Schools, normally the gathering place, they do an excellent, excellent assembly, and the students are always very appreciative and very attentive, and certainly like to thank Sioux Area Schools for continuing that, that focus on, on Veterans Day, because they do just a tremendous job. Okay? Commissioner Baker?
I just wanted to say congrats to the Lake State hockey team for pulling out a big win on Friday, anyway, coming close to coming back on Saturday, but everybody seemed to have a good time at the tailgating, and love everything, love the energy that's going up at Lake State, and also to remind people to go and vote tomorrow.
Yes.
Exercise your right and vote, please.
Yes, it's voting day in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, not, not so much for the commission, but for midterm elections. And I mentioned the hockey, the Laker hockey team. They, we had Colin Sakelmann, one of the defensemen, was in the audience tonight as part of the Lake State, and if he had hung around long enough, I was just going to introduce him real quick and congratulate him on behalf of the commission. And they had maybe the largest crowd that's been in the arena since the playoff days back in 30, 3,800 and some folks in the, in the building, and it was just rocking, and it's nice to see that there were 3,100 and some the night before that where they won. Whole lot different game on Saturday night than on Friday night, because Friday night was just, just tremendous. And they have some potential. We'll see where it goes this year, but hopefully, they continue the path upward. Be nice to get into the playoffs and, and do some, do some damage in playoffs for Lake Superior, for sure. Thanks. Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. I also wanted to say congratulations to Coach Jim Martin and Sioux Area High School Cross Country Teams, both boys and girls, won U.P. State Finals this year. I don't know the statistics, but I don't think that that happens very often. I, in fact, I don't think the boys have won for about six years, and so for them to both come in first the same year, that's a pretty cool feat. And he has an amazing ability how to keep that program growing every single year. Sorry, I haven't been on. Every single year, that program continues to develop and get larger, and, you know, it's just great to see kids out getting physical activity. You don't have to be great at it, you can just get involved, and all you need is a pair of suit, pair of sneakers.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion to enter into closed session to be reconvened after we hear from the city attorney.
Support.
So we're on a roll call, or? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, we are not adjourned, I guess, but for recess. Thank you. Yes, we're live, right? We're back in open session? Commissioner Gary?
To a sellout crowd here.
Bonnie's here.
Thanks, Bonnie.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to, what was the rest of it?
Proceed with the defense.
Proceed with the defense.
Of the Myers Tax Appeal.
Of the Myers Tax Appeal.
As outlined in the closed.
As outlined in the closed session.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please. Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Support.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.